All right, I'm gonna call, call to order our December twenty-sixth city council meeting. Uh, first thing first, the pledge of our flag. Nathan, if you could, uh, start us off.
Heavenly Father, we ask for your wisdom and guidance over our meeting tonight. We ask for your continued blessing over our city, our state, and this great nation. We pray that all we do will honor you in Jesus' holy name. Amen.
Amen. Has everyone had an opportunity to review the meeting minutes from our last meeting?
Yes, sir.
Do I have a motion to approve those meeting minutes? Motion? Do you have a motion? Second. Second. All right. Willie, we're gonna start a vote. Roll call down your way.
Do what now?
Uh, do you approve the minutes?
I'm good.
Tara? Uh, yes. Okay.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. Has everyone had an opportunity to look over the treasury report?
Yes, sir.
Do I have a motion to approve the treasury report?
Motion.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Willie? Starting with you, do you approve the treasury report?
Go on down and come back to me. I'll take you a minute.
Tara?
Aye.
Bob, I approve.
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Nathan? Willie?
I'm good.
Renee, if you could give us a library report.
For the month of December, we've had sixteen patrons and we've checked out eleven groups.
All right, thank you, Renee. Onto whole business. Our first up is going to be the second reading. And of the rezon ordinance number two zero two three one two zero three three. Renee? Oh, I'm sorry, I'm Renee. Hold on.
Ordinance number twenty twenty-three twelve, uh, zero three three, State of Georgia, the Pendergrass, the Georgia Municipal Corporation, the ordinance for the purpose of rezoning property in the City of Pendergrass, Georgia, identified as parcel numbers one oh two zero two five eight, one oh two eight zero zero eight, one oh two eight zero zero nine, one oh two eight zero one zero, and one oh two eight zero one one, and to amend the official zoning map of Pendergrass, Georgia, to provide for repeal of complete need ordinances, to provide separability, to provide an adopted stop in an effective date, and to provide for all other lawful purposes. Whereas the mayor and the council have full power and authority to provide for the execution of all powers, functions, rights, privileges, duties, immunities of the city, its officers, agencies, or employees granted by the City of Pendergrass's charter or by state law, and whereas the municipal city government of the City of Pendergrass here in April City, and all powers of the city shall be vested in the mayor and the council, the mayor and the council shall be the legislative body of the city, and whereas the nineteen eighty-three Constitution of the State of Georgia provides for the self-government of municipalities without the necessity of action by the General Assembly, and whereas the city has been vested with substantial powers, rights, and functions to generally regulate, practice, conduct, or use of property for the purposes of maintaining health, morals, safety, security, peace, and general welfare of the city, and to provide far and enact zoning and developmental regulations, and whereas the city has the legislative power to adopt reasonable ordinances, resolutions, or regulations relating to property within the cities which no provision has been made by general law and which are not inconsistent with the Constitution or any term of provision applicable there too, and whereas existing ordinances, resolutions, rules, and regulations of the cities and its agencies now lawfully in effect, not inconsistent with provisions of the city's charter, shall remain effective until they have been repealed, modified, or amended, and whereas this ordinance is adopted pursuant to the Georgia Constitution, Article nine, section two, paragraph four, which empowers the governing authority of each county and each municipality to adopt plans and exercise the power of zoning, and whereas it is deemed by the city council that the rezoning of the described properties and the amendment of the official zoning map of the city is in performance with a sound comprehensive planning purpose of substantial benefit to the public and in the formation of best interest and general welfare of the people of the city, whereas every official act of the mayor and council which is to become law shall be by ordinance, and whereas procedures required for amending the city's zoning map have been satisfied, including but not limited to noted in public hearings, and whereas the City of Pendergrass held public meetings on this rezoning application at meetings of the city councils and city of Pendergrass on November twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three, and again on December twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three, after such hearings were advertised in the local legal organ of Jackson County, Georgia, and after such property was posted with a public notice of rezoning request. Public input was had on this matter, and whereas the city council, after hearing a report from the appointed zoning administrator, held a vote on the rezon application, and whereas the official zoning map of the City of Pendergrass, Georgia, should be amended to include these properties with a designated and approved zoning classification of MFR multifamily residential with the conditions attached to this order, therefore be it and is hereby ordained by the mayor and the council of the City of Pendergrass, Georgia, while in a regularly scheduled session on the twenty-sixth day of December, twenty twenty-three, that. Section one, the zoning ordinance of the City of Pendergrass and the official zoning map of the City of Pendergrass, Georgia, designating the boundaries of the several types or classes of zoning districts within the city, shall be and are hereby amended so as to change the zoning classification applicable to the following described property. The property is identified as Jackson County, Georgia Tax Parcel Numbers one oh two zero two five eight, comma, one oh two eight zero zero eight, comma, one oh two eight zero zero nine, comma, one oh two eight zero one zero, comma, and one oh two eight zero one one, comma, all of this, Pendergrass, the addresses of one fifty-seven, one eighty-one, two twenty-three, and three eighty-seven Glen G. Road, Pendergrass, Georgia, three oh five six seven. The total amount of acres in these parcel numbers is approximately ten point four. The zoning of these properties shall be and are hereby amended so as to change the zoning classification applicable to these properties from R one residential to MFR multifamily residential with the attached conditions as shown on exhibit A. Section two, the city council makes determination that the applicant has shown that this application and the resulting rezoning promotes health, safety, morals, and general welfare of the citizens of the City of Pendergrass. Section three, amendment to the official zoning map, the official zoning map of the city is hereby amended to reflect the zoning classification for the within described property. Section four, repealer, all city code provisions, zoning ordinance provisions, ordinances, parts of ordinances, or resolutions in conflict with the provisions of this ordinance are hereby repealed. Section five, separability, any of, any part of this ordinance is determined by a court of competent jurisdiction to be invalid, only such part of this ordinance declared to be invalid shall become void, and all other parts shall remain valid and enforceable. It is hereby declared to be the intention of the mayor and the council that all sections, paragraphs, sentences, clauses, and phrases of this ordinance are or were upon their enactment believed by the mayor and the council to be fully valid and enforceable and constitutional. It is hereby declared to be the intention of the mayor and council that, to the greatest extent allowed by law, each and every section, paragraph, sentence, clause, or phrase of this ordinance is separable from every other section, paragraph, sentence, clause, or phrase of this ordinance. It is hereby further declared to be the intention of the mayor and council that, to the greatest extent allowed by law, each section, paragraph, sentence, clause, or phrase of this ordinance is mutually dependent upon any other section, paragraph, sentence, clause, or phrase of this ordinance. In the event that any phrase, clause, sentence, paragraph, or section of this ordinance shall, for what, for any reason whatsoever, shall be declared to be invalid, unconstitutional, or otherwise unenforceable by the valid judgment or decree of any court of competent jurisdiction. It is the express intent of the mayor and council that such invalidity, constitutionality, or unenforceability shall, to the greatest extent allowed by law, not rendered invalid, unconstitutional, or otherwise unenforceable, any of the remaining phrases, clauses, sentences, paragraphs, or sections of this ordinance, and that, to the greatest extent allowed by law, all remaining phrases, clauses, sentences, paragraphs, and sections of this ordinance shall remain valid, constitutional, enforceable, and of full force in effect. Section six, the effective date, this ordinance shall become effective immediately upon adoption by the city council.
At this point, at this point, I'm going to ask if there's a motion to vote on this rezon ordinance. Do I have a motion? Motion? I have a motion. Do I have a second? Second. Do I have a second? Go down the line. Willie?
No.
Tara?
Aye.
Bob, yes. Okay.
Yes.
Yes.
And Nathan?
Uh, stand there.
That is four yes, one no, one abstention. At this point, we are going to start the second reading of the rezon ordinance number two zero two three one two zero three five.
This is ordinance number two zero two three one two zero three five, State of Georgia, the Pendergrass, the Georgia Municipal Corporation, the ordinance for the purpose of rezoning property in the City of Pendergrass, Georgia, identified as parcel number one oh three zero zero six A and one oh three zero two eight, and to amend the official zoning map of Pendergrass, Georgia, to provide for the repeal of complete need ordinances, to provide separability, to provide an adoption effective date, and to provide for other lawful purposes. Whereas the mayor and council shall have the full power and authority to provide for the execution of all powers, functions, rights, privileges, duties, and immunities of the city, its officers, agencies, or employees granted by the City of Pendergrass's charter or by state law, and whereas the municipal government of the City of Pendergrass here in April City, and all powers of the city shall be vested in the mayor and the council. The mayor and the council shall be the legislative body of the city, and whereas the nineteen eighty-three Constitution of the State of Georgia provides for self-government of municipalities without necessity of action by the General Assembly, and whereas the city has been vested with substantial powers, rights, and functions to generally regulate, the practice, conduct, or use of property for the purposes of maintaining health, morals, safety, security, peace, and general welfare of the city, and provide far and enact zoning and developmental regulations, and whereas the city has the legislative power to adopt reasonable ordinances, resolutions, or regulations relating to property within the cities for which no provision has been made by general law, and which are not inconsistent with the Constitution or any term of provision applicable there too, and whereas existing ordinances, regulations, rules, and regulations of the city, which is now lawfully in effect, not inconsistent with provisions of the city's charter, shall remain effective until they have been repealed, modified, or amended, and whereas this ordinance is adopted pursuant to the Georgia Constitution, Article nine, section two, paragraph four, which empowers the governing authority of each county and each municipality to adopt plans and exercise the power of zoning, and whereas it is deemed by the city council that the rezoning of the described, of the described properties and amendment of the official zoning map of the city is in performance with a sound comprehensive planning purpose of substantial benefit to the public and in the formation of best interest and general welfare of the people of the city. Whereas every official act of the mayor and council which is to become law shall be by ordinance, and whereas procedures required for amending the city's zoning map have been satisfied, including but not limited to noted in public hearings, and whereas the City of Pendergrass held public hearings on this rezoning application at the meetings of the city council of the City of Pendergrass on November twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three, and again on December twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-three, after such hearings were advertised in the local legal organ of Jackson County, Georgia, and after such property was posted with public notice of rezoning request, public input was had on this matter, whereas the city council, after hearing a report from the appointed zoning administrator, held a vote on the rezon application, and whereas the official zoning map of the City of Pendergrass, Georgia, should be amended to include these properties with a designated and approved zoning classification of LFR multifamily residential with the conditions attached to this ordinance, therefore be it and is hereby ordained by the mayor and council of the City of Pendergrass, Georgia, while in a regularly scheduled session on the twenty-sixth day of May, twenty twenty-three, that.
Twenty-sixth day of?
Twenty-sixth day, I'm sorry, December, twenty twenty-three. Section one, the zoning ordinance of the City of Pendergrass, Georgia, and the official zoning map of the City of Pendergrass, Georgia, designating the boundaries of several types or classes of zoning districts within the city, shall be and are hereby amended so as to change the zoning classification applicable to the following described property. The property is identified as Jackson County, Georgia Tax Parcel Numbers one oh three zero zero six A and one oh three zero two eight, Pendergrass City, addresses of seven oh eight Glen G. Road, Pendergrass, Georgia, three oh five six seven, and Glen G. Road, Pendergrass, Georgia, three oh five six seven. The total amount of acres in these parcel numbers is approximately twenty-two point thirty-one acres. The zoning of these properties shall be and are hereby amended so as to change the zoning classification applicable to these properties from R one residential and AGR agricultural residential to MFR multifamily residential and OI office of the institutional government would be attached to the conditions as shown on exhibit A. Section two, the city council makes the determination that the applicant has shown that this application and the resulting rezoning promotes the health, safety, morals, and general welfare of the citizens of the City of Pendergrass. Section three, amendment to the official zoning map, the official zoning map of the city is hereby amended to reflect the zoning classification for the within described properties. Section four, repealer, all city code provisions, zoning ordinance provisions, ordinances, parts of ordinances, or resolutions in conflict with the provisions of this ordinance are hereby repealed. Section five, separability, if any part of this ordinance is determined by a court of competent jurisdiction to be invalid, only such part of this ordinance declared to be invalid shall become a void, and all other parts shall remain valid and enforceable. It is hereby declared to be the intention of the mayor and the council that all sections, paragraphs, sentences, clauses, and phrases of this ordinance are or were upon their enactment believed by the mayor and council to be fully valid and enforceable and constitutional. It is hereby declared to be the intention of the mayor and council that, to the greatest extent allowed by law, each and every section, paragraph, sentence, clause, or phrase of this ordinance is separable from every other section, paragraph, sentence, clause, or phrase of this ordinance. It is hereby further declared to be the intention of the mayor and council that, to the greatest extent allowed by law, each section, paragraph, sentence, clause, or phrase of this ordinance is mutually dependent upon any other section, paragraph, sentence, clause, or phrase of this ordinance. In the event that any phrase, clause, sentence, paragraph, or section of this ordinance shall, for any reason whatsoever, be declared invalid, unconstitutional, or otherwise unenforceable by the valid judgment or decree of any court of competent jurisdiction, it is the express intent of the mayor and council that such invalidity, unconstitutionality, or unenforceability shall, to the greatest extent allowed by, while not rendered invalid, unconstitutional, or otherwise unenforceable, any of the remaining phrases, clauses, sentences, paragraphs, or sections of the ordinance, and that, to the greatest extent allowed by law, all remaining phrases, clauses, sentences, paragraphs, and sections of the ordinance is shall remain valid, constitutional, enforceable, and of full force in effect. Section six, the effective date, this ordinance shall become effective immediately upon adoption by the city council.
Okay. Do I have a motion for the vote on the rezon ordinance number two zero three one two zero three five? There are motions. A motion? I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second? Uh, Will?
Aye.
Tara? Uh, yes. Okay.
Yes.
At this time, we are going to move on to the second read of the acceptance and of the roadways of Pendergrass Plan, immediately into our main debate system. That will do it after all the rest. Yes, I'm sorry.
The City of Pendergrass, Georgia, County of Jackson, State of Georgia, Municipal, Georgia Municipal Corporation, twenty twenty-three twelve zero nine, its ordinance to accept the right of way deed to the street in the Pendergrass Plan subdivision to provide for an effective date and for other purposes, section one, the governing authority of the City of Pendergrass hereby ordained by the Council, whereas municipal public roads in Georgia are duly created identification by prescription by the express grant of releasement by deed by official authority proceeding or by condemnation, to summit.
Thank you, Willie.
CTA thirty-two dash three dash three, and whereas the importance and effect of public roads on the ownership of land and the operation of local government cannot be overstated, public roads may fix one or more boundaries of a tract of land determined of life of illegal, uh, illegal right of access to a tract and may constitute an achievement in the title across from the interior of the tract, and whereas public roads are also a major function of local governments, which generally, which are generally obligated to maintain, repair, put forward, and enforce right of ways on public roads, under the CTA nine six twenty-one and thirty-two dash three dash one, and whereas generally, public road is defined in state law as a highway road, street avenue, toll road, tollway, drive, detour, or other way, open to the public and intended for, or used for its enjoyment, for the right of passage of vehicles in any county or municipality of Georgia, including the public drive, structures, sidewalks, buildings, apartments, systems, maintenance, construction, maintenance, and enjoyment of such right of way, OCGA thirty-two dash one dash three twenty-four, and whereas the city recognizes the high level of state law governing municipal corporations in the Georgia Constitution of nineteen eighty-three.
Thank you, Willie.
It is supreme to all general and local acts of the general assembly as well as to city ordinances and reservations, with respect to the sources of power of the municipal corporations and the more specific provisions of the Constitution, or the home rule provision, supplementary powers provision, zoning provisions, eminent domain laws, intergovernmental contracts provision, special district laws, and the gratuity laws. The supplementary powers provision is an important constitutional provision granting specific powers to cities. This provision spells out supplementary powers that municipalities and counties may exercise in addition to supplementary powers possessed by virtue of their charter or other local legislation. Specifically mentioned and included are the power to provide police and fire services, solid waste collection and disposal, public health facilities and services, street and road construction and maintenance, parks and recreational programs and facilities, storm, water, and sewage filtration and disposal systems, order treatment and distribution, public housing, public transportation, and library, and whereas on record, public roads are those roads that have been established by express grant, express dedication, or by a government special statutory authority, such as through its condemnation or purchasing powers, OCGA thirty-three dash three dash three, and whereas regarding public roads, on record, local government authorities may expressly create public roads by statute by acquiring roads via purchase, dedication, combination, donation, and exchange of property, OCGA twenty-two dash one dash two, thirty-two three three, thirty-two four forty-one, thirty-two four ninety, thirty-two four ninety-two, thirty-two thirty four three. The officials, the Georgia official code section thirty-two three three provides public government twelve powers to accept donations, transfers, or devices of land from private and public entities in fee or in any less or interest in or into agreements with private persons for the exchange of real property or interest bearing for the public's purposes, acquire roads by prescription, and acquire roads by dedication, and whereas the Pendergrass LLC, a Georgia municipal liability company in its capacity as a homeowners' association of Pendergrass Glen G. Subdivision, I'm sorry, William Subdivision, located with the City of Pendergrass, has petitioned the City of Pendergrass to, by deed, the street first in exhibit A, attached hereto into and as a part of the City of Pendergrass Street infrastructure. This dedication is made by deed and the grantor grantee and public parties to the transaction. The intent to dedicate these streets is manifested by a decision from the dedicator to the city, and whereas sidewalks in the subdivision are also considered a part of public road, be it land or shop versus McLean, ninety-eight Georgia appeal, seventy-two nineteen fifty-eight, sidewalks are intended as public thoroughfares to keep personal corporations placing obstructions on or over them in such manner as to render them dangerous to persons using them in a normal manner is guilty of negligence. As noted in the statutory definition of public road, a public roadway includes all structures, sidewalks, facilities, and apartments that incidental to the construction, maintenance, enjoyment of such right of way, OCGA thirty-two one four. Accordingly, the width of the public right of way is determined by deed, and whereas the public right of way may also be affected by the duty of local government and of any corporate owners to keep the right of way free of encroachment, OCGA thirty-two six one A. It shall be unlawful for any person to obstruct, encroach, own, or lease, sell, or any merchandise on, or intramaterially, any part of the public road, OCGA thirty-two dash six dash two, authority to regulate parking and attendant vehicles on public roads, Crowder versus Kelly, two thirty-two Georgia, sixteen nineteen seventy-four, finding of the DOT can require removal of any obstruction placed without express permission on a road within the state system and government body of the municipality can require removal of any such obstruction placed on street, um, through street, not on a state system. The city recognizes the courts that found unauthorized encroachment as constituting an unlawful nuisance, including fuel tanks, Williamson versus Suter, one seventy-two Georgia, three sixty-four nineteen thirty-one, Payelephone, City of Dalton versus Statham, two oh one, Georgia, seven fifty-four nineteen forty-seven, New Stans, McReal versus the City of Atlanta, thirty-two Georgia appeals, five nineteen twenty-four, and piles of debris, Harba versus Richland Ball Company, two oh four Georgia, three fifty-two nineteen forty-eight. That any unauthorized immobile structure on a public road may constitute a public use, GS versus Pile Off the Hardware Company, one sixty-seven Georgia, fields, seventy nineteen eighty-three. Structures on a private property adjoining a road right of way only becomes unlawful if they obstruct a clear view of roads in such manner as to constitute a traffic hazard and that they are unauthorized. Williams and, uh, Williams versus Stripes Company, two thirteen Georgia, fields, four seventy, and that nineteen ninety-four. Finding plaintiffs unable to show that the allegedly vision of a school free and other of the equipment located on this property was authorized, unauthorized. The city recognizes that any right of way is also influenced by a local government power to regulate and maintain utility lines. Local governments are authorized by statute to license the use of city and county streets for the transmission of utilities, public streets, railways, tolls, longs, as the use of the public generally is not unreasonably interfered with, OCGA thirty-two four four two. A county may grant permit and establish reasonable regulations for the installation, construction, maintenance, renewal, removal, and relocation of pipes, mains, conduits, cables, wires, poles, towers, and traffic and other signals, and other equipment, facilities, or appliances of any utility in, along, over, under the public roads of the county, OCGA thirty-six thirty-four two, regulation of the territorial boundaries. Now for, now therefore be it ordained and resolved by the mayor and the city council of Pendergrass, Georgia, that the city on behalf of citizens of Pendergrass accepts express offer of deed Pendergrass LLC, in its capacity as owner of the homeowners' association of Pendergrass Plan, a deed to the Pendergrass Plan subdivision to. of Pendergrass Plan, a deed to the Pendergrass Plan subdivision to the city and except by deed the roads in Pendergrass, Pendergrass Lynn, for the attachment of A incorporated herein by reference and be it further ordained, that the mayor and the city council, whilst the property owner has dedicated to the city by deed the streets attached to exonerate A and that the public authority, being the mayor and the city council of the City of Pendergrass, thus hereby exempt these streets as deemed, thereby creating public streets within the corporate city limits of Pendergrass, Georgia. Be it further ordained, be it Pendergrass hereby requires a deed and title to these roadways via the twenty-three, O C G A thirty-two three three, thirty-two four forty-one, thirty-two four ninety, thirty-two four ninety-two, thirty-six thirty-four three. Section two, ordinances or powers of ordinances can come forth to the terms of this ordinance as hereby repealed.
Do I have a motion to vote on the acceptance of the roadways of the Pendergrass Plan subdivision for roadways?
No.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second. Will, you'll start down again.
Aye.
Yes.
Aye.
Yes.
Aye.
All in favor. Now we are going to move on to the second read of the amendments of the garage sale ordinance. Away.
This is ordinance number zero eight zero one seven five, City of Pendergrass, Georgia Municipal Corporations, State of Georgia, County of Jackson, and ordinance by the mayor and the city council of the City of Pendergrass, Georgia, to amend the ordinance pertaining to the regulating garage and yard sales, to require a permit, to require cleanup after sale, to limit the sale duration, to limit the number of sales, to establish advertising requirements, to impose responsibility for fear movement of traffic, and to promote public health, safety, and welfare, and for other purposes. Now therefore be it ordained by the mayor and the city council of the City of Pendergrass, and is hereby ordained by authority of the same statute, section one, City of Pendergrass City Code, of ordinance entitled Garage and Yard Sales, shall be amended as follows below. Section two, this ordinance shall be known as the City of Pendergrass amended garage and yard sales ordinance. Section three, the purpose and intent, this chapter is enacted to protect, preserve, and make the health, safety, and welfare of citizens of Pendergrass, Georgia, through the regulation and control of garage and yard sales. It is the intent of this chapter to establish objective standards that will reduce excessive and repeated yard sales at the same location and mandate that each yard sale be permitted by the city, and to require that all yard sales be time limited, and that all yard sale signs are removed after completion of the yard sale. It is the intent of this or, the intent of this ordinance is to improve the enjoyment of life and property and in the conduct of business throughout the city. This chapter has been narrowly tailored as the content, neutral time, place, manner, regulation, to serve a significant governmental interest while leaving open ample opportunity for residents to conduct legitimate yard sales. Section four, enforcement, whenever the police department or code enforcement official determines that a violation of any of the provisions of this article has occurred, the police department or code enforcement department may call in the issuance of a citation or infraction of this article. Section five, general penalty, in this section the term violation of this code means doing an act that is prohibited, made, or declared unlawful by an offense, or misdemeanor by ordinance, or by rule, or regulation authorized by ordinance. Failure to perform an act that is required to be performed by ordinance, or by rule, or regulation authorized by ordinance, or failure to perform an act, so failure is declared a misdemeanor, or an offense, or unlawful by ordinance, or by rule, or regulation authorized by ordinance. In this section, the term violation of this code does not include the failure of a city officer or city employee to perform an official duty unless it is provided that failure to perform that duty is to be punished as provided in this section, or is clear from the context that is the intent to impose penalty provided for in this section upon the officer or employee. Acceptance otherwise provided, a person convicted of a violation of this code shall be punished by a fine not exceeding one thousand dollars, imprisonment for a term not exceeding six months, or compulsory labor for the city on the street, sidewalk, squares, or other public places, for a period not exceeding seven days, or any combination thereof. With respect to violations of this code that are continuous with respect to time, each day the violation continues as a separate offense, and with respect to violations of this code that are not continuous with respect to time, each day the violation continues as a separate offense. The imposition of a penalty does not prevent revocation or suspension of a license, permit, or franchise, or other administrative sanction. Violations of this code that are continuous with respect to time are a public nuisance and may be evaded by an justive or other equitable release, and by such other means as are provided by law. Imposition of a penalty does not prevent extralimbing. State law reference limitation on penalties, O C G A thirty-six thirty-five six three two, authority to punish, ordinance violation by acquiring labor, O C G A thirty-six oh eight eight. Section six, all ordinances are parts of ordinance deals which complique the provisions of this ordinance are to be examined such conflicts except the term acts provided hereby repealed. Section seven, should any provision of this ordinance be declared invalid by a court of competent jurisdiction, such decision shall not affect the validity of this ordinance as a whole or any provision thereof, other than the provision specifically declared to be invalid. The city council declares that if it has passed this ordinance in each subsection, sentence, all, the phrase thereof, irrespective of the fact, that any one or more subsections since all of these phrases may be declared invalid. Section eight, this ordinance shall be enforced for the sake of an official adoption by the city council or mayor. Section nine, this ordinance shall be amended to permit up to three annual yard sales by any person, only occupying any residence or business within the City of Pendergrass. Additionally, any such yard sale may be held on any day of the year. This section amended shall be seen one digit by two.
All right, do we have a motion to vote on the amendment to the garage sale ordinance?
So.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second? You can start down there. Tara?
Aye.
Bon, approved.
Aye.
Aye. All in favor. Next on the agenda is the second read of the adoption of a mobile truck food ordinance. Oh, this is the last one.
Ordinance number one two two six one zero, City of Pendergrass, Georgia Municipal Corporations, State of Georgia, County of Jackson, and ordinance by the mayor and the city council of the City of Pendergrass, ordered to establish ordinance pertaining to regulated mobile food products, to require a permit, to require cleanup, to establish advertising requirements, to impose responsibility to prevent the movement of traffic, and to promote public health, safety, and welfare, and for other purposes. Now therefore be it ordained by the mayor and the city council of the City of Pendergrass, and is hereby ordained by authority of the same statute, whereas the mayor and council shall have the power and authority to provide for the execution of all powers, functions, rights, privileges, duties, and amenities of the city, if officers, agencies, or employees in the City of Pendergrass's charter, or by state law, and whoever is municipal government of the City of Pendergrass, and an upper city, and all powers in the city shall be vested in the mayor and the council. The mayor and the council shall be the legislative body of the city, and whereas existing ordinances, resolutions, rules, and regulations of the city and its agencies now lawfully can affect not even the provisions of the city's charter shall remain effective until later repealed, modified, or amended, and whereas every official act of the mayor and council which is become law shall be ordinance, and whereas the government, I'm sorry, the governing authority of the city finds desirable to provide for the licensing, operation, and regulation of local food vendors, be it and is hereby ordained by the mayor and the council of the City of Pendergrass that section one, Pendergrass City Code ordinances be added to by the adoption of this ordinance, be titled Mobile Food Unit. Section two, this ordinance shall be known as the City of Pendergrass Mobile Food Unit ordinance. It shall be designated as chapter ninety-one in the City Code of Ordinance. Section three, for the intent, this chapter is enacted to protect, preserve, and promote the health, safety, and welfare of citizens of Pendergrass, Georgia, through the regulation and control of mobile food trucks or trailer sales. It is the intent of this chapter to establish objective standards above. The intent of this ordinance is to improve the enjoyment of life and property and in the conduct of business throughout the city. This chapter has been narrowly tailored as content, neutral time, place, and manner of regulation to serve a significant governmental interest while leaving open ample opportunity for mobile food vendors to operate within the city limits. Section four, enforcement, wherever, uh, I'm sorry, whenever the police department or federal enforcement official determines that a violation of any of the provisions of this article has occurred, the police department or federal enforcement department shall be issuing a citation or infraction as a part of it. Section five, general penalty, in this section the term violation of this code is not included in actions prohibited, made, or declared unlawful, an offense, or by misdemeanor, by ordinance, or by rule, or regulation authorized by ordinance. Failure to perform an act that is required to be performed by ordinance, or by rule, or regulation, or by law, or by ordinance, or failure to perform an act, if failure is declared a misdemeanor, or an offense, or unlawful by ordinance, or by rule, or regulation authorized by ordinance. In this section, the term violation of this code is not included by failure of a city officer or city employee to perform an official duty unless it is provided that so, one duty is to be punished as provided in this section, or is clear from the context that is the intent to impose penalty provided for this section upon the officer or employee. Acceptance otherwise provided, a person convicted of a violation of this code shall be punished by a fine not exceeding one thousand dollars, imprisonment for a term not exceeding six months, or compulsory labor for the city on the street, sidewalk, squares, or other public places, for a period not exceeding thirty days, or any combination thereof. With respect to violations of this code that are continuous with respect to time, each day the violation continues as a separate offense, and with respect to violations of this code that are not continuous with respect to time, each day the violation continues as a separate offense. The imposition of a penalty does not prevent revocation or suspension of license, permit, or franchise, or other administrative sanction. Violations of this code that are continuous with respect to time or a public nuisance and may be evaded by a justive or other equitable release, and by such other means as are provided by law. Imposition of a penalty does not prevent equitable release. State law reference mutations on penalties, O C G thirty-five six eight two, authority to punish, ordinance violation by acquiring, O C G A thirty-six oh eight. Section six, all ordinances are parts of ordinance deals which complique the provisions of this ordinance are to be examined such that the term acts provided hereby repealed. Section seven, should any provision of this ordinance be declared invalid by a court of competent jurisdiction, such decision shall not affect the validity of this ordinance as a whole, or any provision thereof, other than the provision specifically declared to be invalid. The city council declares that it would have passed this ordinance in each subsection, sentence, all, the phrase thereof, irrespective of the fact that any one or more subsections since all of these phrases may be declared invalid. Section eight, this ordinance shall be can, shall be in full force and effect when its adoption by the city council.
Do I have a motion to vote on the adoption of a mobile truck food ordinance? I'm moving. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. Will?
Aye.
Tara?
Aye.
Um, I, uh, and, yeah. All in favor. All right, that is a conclusion of the old business, now as far as new business, uh, with the election, uh, the November election, there are now several positions to be sworn in. That way, everyone takes office by January one. Most are sitting, one is a, a new, uh, start with Renek.
I am Mr. China, solemnly swear or affirm that I will truly perform to the best of my abilities, the duties of the mayor of the City of Pendergrass, by adopting and enforcing such measures, as in my judgment, shall be calculated to promote the general welfare of the inhabitants of the City of Pendergrass and the common interests thereof, and that I will support and defend the charter thereof, as well as the Constitution and laws of the State of Georgia and of the United States of America. I further swear that I am not the holder of any public money due to this date, unaccounted for, and that I am not the holder of any office or trust under the government of the United States, any other state, or any foreign state, which by the laws of this state I am prohibited from holding, and that I am otherwise qualified to hold said office according to the city charter and the laws of Georgia.
I will.
Thanks, Mr. China.
Thanks, sir. Next on our agenda is going to be so, yeah. I am still the abiding to solemnly swear or affirm that I will truly perform to the best of my abilities, the duties of city council member, by adopting and enforcing such measures, as in my judgment, shall be best calculated to promote the general welfare of the inhabitants of the City of Pendergrass, and the common interests thereof, and that I will support and defend the charter thereof, as well as the Constitution and the laws of the State of Georgia and of the United States of America. I further swear that I am not the holder of any public money due to this date, unaccounted for, and that I am not the holder of any office or any trust under the government of the United States, any other state, or any foreign state by which the laws of this state I am prohibited from holding, and that I am otherwise not qualified to hold said office according to the city charter and the laws of Georgia.
Congratulations.
Tara?
Yep.
And.
I, Tara Bonner, do solemnly swear or affirm that I will truly perform to the best of my abilities, the duties of city council member, by adopting and enforcing such measures, as in my judgment, shall be best calculated to promote the general welfare and of the inhabitants of the City of Pendergrass, and the common interests thereof, and that I will support and defend the charter thereof, as well as the Constitution and laws of the State of Georgia and the United States of America. I further swear that I am not the holder of any public money due to this date, unaccounted for, and that I am not the holder of any office or trust under the government of the United States, any other state, or any other foreign state by which the laws of this state I am prohibited from holding, and that I am otherwise qualified to hold said office according to the city charter and the laws of Georgia.
Hello.
I give a bonus, do solemnly swear or affirm that I will truly perform to the best of my abilities, the duties of city council member, by adopting and enforcing such member measures, as in my judgment, shall be best calculated to promote the general welfare of the inhabitants of the City of Pendergrass, and the common interests thereof, and that I will support and defend the charter thereof, as well as the Constitution and laws of the State of Georgia and of the United States of America. I further swear that I am not the holder of any public money due to this date, unaccounted for, and that I am not the holder of any office or trust under the government of for, and that I am not the holder of any office or trust under the government of the United States, any other state, or any foreign state by which the laws of this state I am prohibited from holding, and that I am otherwise qualified to hold such said office according to the charter and the laws of the state of Georgia.
Congratulations.
Congratulating to all the elected officials of the city. Lastly, I will offer a public comment. Is there anybody that would like to speak from the public?
Again, out of one oh six five three, Glen G. Rader. One thing I might say is I wish some people in the city council would do it, but voters, voters, which is force your opinion for voters. Secondly, uh, most of you are new here. Most of you knew the city of Pendergrass. Eighty-five south that way if you want to go back to your big city. No one wants a big city here. Nobody wanted. And, uh, from a hundred and eighty days from today, since you're sworn in, it's a day can be recalled, so I hope nobody finds nothing on you.
I think today's a sad day to just show the people of Pendergrass that their comments didn't matter. I taught at North Jackson for thirty years. The kids in this town mean a lot to me. I did not hear one thing about what you could do for them. It's all these apartments going up that only the landowner is getting anything out of. Yes, you're making more room for more people to come in, and you're bringing more kids in. And what are you doing for them? I haven't heard one thing. You've got all this money, you've got enough money to do all this, why can't they have a rec. department? Why can't you start something for them? If they don't have anything to do, you're going to have kids getting in trouble. And it breaks my heart. I don't know why you need more apartments. The industry structure can't handle it. I don't know if any of you have ever gotten a phone call saying that your child has been in an accident, and you don't know what you're going to find when you get there. But until these roads get built, all roads, and it's not just Pendergrass's roads, most of these people have to use it going to the school. It's dangerous. And I don't think it's being thawed out. I think that it's being freed. And I'm sorry I just had to say all this because it has been on my mind and it's building up. But I'm telling you, these kids are special. There's good kids in this town. And I hope you will do something for them.
Mrs. Love, do I speak to you after a meeting? Any other public comment? All right, with that, we are adjourned.